Good evening and welcome to the June 10th meeting of the Hickory City Council. At this time, I would like to invite Rabbi Dennis Jones from Temple Beth Salaam to the podium for our invocation. I would ask that you stand, please, if you're able, and remain standing after our invocation for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you for being here, sir.
Oh, my privilege, Mayor Guest. Thank you for inviting me. Would you pray with me? Adonai, our God, it is with awe and gratitude that I behold the beauty of your miraculous creation. We truly are surrounded by miracles, day by day, hour by hour, and minute by minute. It is also with gratitude and humility that I am able to be a spiritual leader in a city as kind and caring as the city of Hickory. A city that looks out for the peace, prosperity, health, and happiness of all of its citizens. I thank you, Adonai, for the leaders of our city that stand before us today. I know that each of them has a heart for service. I know that each of them is deeply committed to improving the quality of life for our city and all of its residents. As our leaders meet tonight, Adonai, I ask that you would guide and calm their hearts and minds. May every word they speak, every decision they make, serve to improve the peace, prosperity, health, and happiness of all of the residents of our community. And may every word and decision bring honor to your holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you for all that you do. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'd just like to remind everyone, please, if you have a cellphone or some kind of electronic device, if you would please silence that during the meeting, we would appreciate that. Mr. Zagoroli is joining us, and also by Zoom, I believe it is, Mr. David Williams is also joining us. Do we have David there? Is he there by voice or audio? I mean, is he just audio? Or is he? I don't see a picture of him or anything. Okay, all right, well, we've got everyone here, so we'll get started. We have one person who has signed up tonight to be, to address the council. We will allow opportunity if there are others who would like to address the council, but at this time, I would call on Ms. Daria Jackson to the podium, and she would like to address the council tonight. So, Daria, welcome, and four, three minutes.
Hello, my name is Daria Jackson. I view my address, too, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, it's 133 Seventeenth Street Southeast. Before I start talking, first of all, Tony, thank you, but I remember we were having city council, so I said I could spare it then. My concern is the kids. They're bored. There's nothing to do. When I was growing up, we had pools to go to. They have nothing, and that's a shame. And I know brown pen in the park are wrecked, they do what they can. However, the kids over at Sivitan, they're sitting there on the brick wall, they don't have nothing to do. And Idol hands us the devil's workshop. They're going to find something to do, and it's probably going to be something we're not going to like. And it's our problem, it's everybody's problem, whether they're black, white, blue, or green, they all get in trouble if they have nothing to do. And I applaud brown pen and all that they do, but Highland, when you have parents that work, they're not going to take time to put their kids in the car and take them to go play basketball or football somewhere. And when we had bikes when I was growing up, we would ride to wherever we needed to go to, but those kids are not getting that same thing. Another thing, when I lived in, when I was growing up, we, I say the colonial house apartments. Summertime, we automatically went up to College Parks Field and played football in the summertime, and we just went through the fence. Nobody said anything. All of a sudden, I'm hearing that they're worried about insurance and being sued, and the kids have nothing to do. And if we don't start doing something soon, I'm afraid that we're going to have the same summer we had in, I think, 2000, 1993, I think it was. That was a horrible year. We had about two, three people get killed on South Center Street, and then they begin to shoot again. I had a friend that called me who was distraught about two weeks ago. She had picked up a group of boys, they wanted to go over to the fab, that's where they lived, so she gave them a ride, no problem. They said, "We're bored, we don't have nothing to do." She said, "Well, you'll have to find something to do." After she dropped them little boys off between ages of 12 and 15, somebody called her and said, "Be careful, one of the boys have a gun." They have to have something to do. And that's not Black Lives Matter movement, that's everybody's movement, because some way, somehow, they're going to become somebody else's problem if we don't take care of them. If there's other organizations that's willing to help, I believe that the city needs to start working with those other organizations if they come for them as any way they can. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Daria. And also, I forgot to welcome Arnita Dula. She's filling in this evening, so I appreciate her being here as well. Thank you. She's filling in for John, obviously. Next on the agenda is approval of minutes, our regular meeting of June the 1st, 2021.
Move approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? And we got an aye from David, I heard it. All right. David, if I forget you over there, let me know.
Yes, sir.
All right. That was unanimous, by the way. Special meeting of June the 9th, 2021.
Move approval.
All right, we have a motion. We have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? All right, that passes unanimous as well. Next on the agenda is our reaffirmation ratification on second readings.
Move approval.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? That carries as well, unanimous. All right, our consent agenda, I'll ask if there's anyone present from staff or council that would like to have any items removed from the consent agenda. And I just will make note of item number B, our meeting in July, traditionally, we cancel that meeting, so just make everyone aware.
Move approval of the consent agenda.
All right, we have a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? All right, the consent agenda passes unanimously. All right, moving right along, we have one public hearing this evening, so to introduce our public hearing, I'll turn it over to our city manager, Mr. Warren Wood.
Thank you, Mayor Guest, member of the city council, Ms. Dula. The one public hearing tonight is consideration of the amendments to Article III of Chapter Two of the Hickory Code of Ordinances, and it'll be presented by Deputy City Attorney Arnita Dula.
All right, good evening, Mayor Guest, council, and city manager Wood. Again, this is an ordinance to amend Article III, which deals with planning, the Planning Commission in Chapter Two, the administration chapter of the Hickory Code of Ordinances. Just want to give you a little bit of background. The Hickory Regional Planning Commission was established in 1963 via Session Law 477-1963, House Bill 721. That bill required the council to adopt an ordinance to establish the Planning Commission, and city council adopted the article that I'm addressing tonight. Then in 1967, Session Law 214-1967 amended Session Law 477-1963, and this was just some wording change, it wasn't a major substantive change. Currently, Senate Bill 192 was adopted by our legislature, and it repealed Session Law 477, 1963, and Session Law 21, 1967. The bill also mandates that the city adopt an ordinance to establish the Planning Commission, and that adoption has to be pursuant to Article III of Chapter 160D of the general statutes. So the proposed amendments revise certain sections in Article III, Sections 296-96 through So we're going to go by section. Section 2-96, which deals with the establishment, the commission's jurisdiction, and defining the Planning Commission. The name is going to remain the same, it still will be the Hickory Regional Planning Commission. Designates the city's planning area and also designates the Hickory Regional Planning Commission as the city's planning commission, because of course, under the statute, you actually could serve, or another group could serve, but the Hickory Regional Planning Commission will still be designated in that capacity. Section 2-97 dealing with the composition and qualifications and appointments terms. Currently, the Planning Commission was 12 members. The proposed revision reduces that to nine members and establishes the membership composition. Each ward will have one representative or one member. Catawba County will have two members, and Burke County will have one member. These areas, we have ETJ in Catawba County and Burke County, and under the statutes, there's a requirement for proportional representation. 297 continued, of course, with repealing the Session Law that established the Planning Commission, we're actually starting fresh, and so you couldn't have everyone serving, start off serving a three-year term, because they would all roll off at the same time. So the initial terms are staggered, and this is just randomly done. We did check the minutes from that time, and the Board of Adjustment actually established the staggered terms, but the minutes didn't address how they went about it. So you can see here, the wards, each member will serve the designated term for their initial term, and then, once their term ends, they are eligible to be appointed to unlimited This section deals with meetings, compensation, some of the things that the Planning Commission has the authority to do. The Planning Commission, they elect their officers, a chair, a vice chair, and a secretary. They will establish bylaws or rules to conduct business, meet once a month. All members have equal rights and privileges, and they will serve without compensation. Additionally, they may create committees. Other powers and duties, as you can see, the comprehensive plan, of course, we already have a comprehensive planning document. One of the newer things is to facilitate citizen engagement in the planning process, so they could plan activities to engage citizens. And they can develop recommended policies, ordinances, development regulations, administrative Of course, amendments to the tech zoning map. They review those and make recommendations to this body. They also hear special use prevents, and then any other duties that this council may direct. They will also continue to serve as the Board of Adjustment, as the Planning Commission currently does. So, that was brief. Any questions?
You may just, and maybe I know why it is, I think, but just go over why we had to change it briefly, why it was changed from what it was to what it is.
Well, times change. First, foremost, we have a new chapter, 160D, which has the planning regulations, zoning regulations, and also, this gives us an opportunity to be more flexible in that you, as a governing body, have control over how the Planning Commission is to be set up. Previously, of course, it was determined by the state legislature, it was established by a local act. We were very limited in making any kind of changes regarding the membership composition. In fact, you couldn't unless we did what we've done now, and that is go to the legislature to make those changes. So here, again, it offers more flexibility. It fits with the times, with, as we're doing with economic development, as we're moving forward. So this is a way for the Planning Commission to continue the work that it's doing, but in today's time.
And I knew the answer to that, I just wanted to make it for public record. All right, any other questions from council? All right. Okay, this is a public hearing, so at this time, I'll declare the public hearing open and ask if there's anyone present who would like to speak in opposition of this consideration of the amendments to Article III of Chapter Two of the Hickory City Code of Ordinances. There being no one desiring to speak in opposition, I'll ask if there's anyone present who would like to speak in favor. All right, there being no one from the public desiring to speak, I'll declare the public hearing closed and ask if there is any further discussion or motion from council.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? I heard David. About to forget you over there, David, I'm not used to looking over there for you. All right. All right. That was our one and only public hearing for this evening. Our next item on the agenda is, we have one departmental report, and for our departmental report, it's a presentation from our city manager, Mr. Warren Wood, on the racial disparities report update and our next steps, so I'll turn it over to you, sir.
All right, thank you, Mayor Guest, members of the city council, Ms. Dula. So, yeah, strategies to address racial disparities and upward mobility in our community, and maybe a better title may have been strategies to begin addressing. There's, this is going to be the first few steps of a marathon, this isn't a sprint. A lot of these issues have been decades or generations in the making, and there's not going to be a silver bullet, so, but we'll walk through a number of things. The timeline that brought us here, just a brief summary of the report, improving, how we might go about improving access to economic opportunity in our community, and roles the various organizations play in that, and then we have 10 initial strategies, and then next steps beyond that. So, we'll start with the timeline. The summer, last summer, we received some requests and comments about, you know, racial disparities in our community, so we city commissioned a study, to begin studying what those actually were, and the degree to which the disparities exist, and we started that process with the Western Piedmont Council of Government in August of 2020. It was, it's an 81-page report, it's very extensive, it covered a dozen different topics and subtopics, you know, income, poverty, unemployment, educational attainment, homeownership, minority business ownership, just on that line. So, and again, then also a lot of subcategories, it's very thorough, and it looked at the American Community Survey data, which was a four-year rolling average of demographic and economic information related to that. So we got the results back in January, we did a, the COG came and did a presentation. We followed that up with engaging some of the community partners that are involved in workforce and employment and other issues, so we put together a special workshop on racial disparities at the, at the community college in February, and we had K64, CVCC, the Workforce Development Board, also had a lot of good public comment and suggestions that came out of that, so that was, that was a good meeting. And since that time, we've been working, again, with various groups in the community to come up with a variety of strategies on how we might start addressing some of these issues, particularly from a job, employment, economic development perspective, and making sure everybody's having an opportunity to participate in our local economy. So, what the report revealed, it absolutely revealed that there were disparities based on race in our community and a variety of categories, and we saw that minorities constitute a growing percentage of Hickory's workforce, and our region's traditional population is aging, and that trend will continue to occur in our region, so we're going to see our growth in minority populations in our community coming up in the next generation particularly. And it's imperative that our workforce has the skill sets necessary to participate and succeed in the economy of tomorrow. And there's also a concern about a skills gap crisis that will involve, you know, we're going to have to engage school-aged students early and educate them, and training expertise they'll need to be successful in the new economy. So I won't go through all the, all the results, but, you know, here's just a sampling, and what this report will do, will set a benchmark, and so we can measure, and I'll talk about how frequently we will measure, progress being made in various categories that were measured over time, and, you know, we can get a feel for what's working and what's not working, and we can, we're not necessarily married to the strategies, I mean, we're going to be flexible and be able to change as we need to. So, obviously, there are disparities, you know, the white population is actually the, on average, the minority participation in the workforce is higher than white, but that's due to the aging, but there are some disparities in the unemployment rate particularly, so that would be, be a measure. Additionally, household income, this was stark, you can see the African-American average income, household income, $25,000. Asian-Americans were actually 66,000, Hispanic 29. So you can see there's some pretty significant disparities in household income amongst those groups. Poverty statistics, if you look at the white poverty numbers, I mean, compared to the minority numbers, the minority numbers are double what's the white poverty rate, so that obviously, that's a major, a major issue that will, again, setting a benchmark to work from, and SNAP, it's the old food stamp program now called the Supplemental Nutrition Ameri, I can't read, but anyway, it's, again, the same, the numbers are similar in that they're probably, for the minority, minority community, triple what the white numbers are for those SNAP benefits. So that's, so we've got, there's dozens of different measures that we have out of the report, so we'll be able to, again, set the, set the benchmark and measures and move forward to see, to see what kind of progress is being made in some of these areas. But the very basic fundamental, you know, concept, a good paying job is the surest way to avoid poverty. So, but the questions are, how can individuals prepare for and connect to those employment opportunities as they occur? So that's, that's the challenge. That's how do we get people prepared and get people connected to the job opportunities that are, that are occurring in our, our community? So, building that foundation, so for most, building a foundation enables them to be successful, and it starts at home, and it also starts typically with the public school system. Now, the city's challenge is, you know, we try to provide safe communities, you know, good infrastructure, we don't do a lot in the home, per se, and the same with the school system. We have relationships with the school system, but we don't fund the school system, you're not the board for the school system, so we have limitations on what we can do in those areas. But that's typically where, you know, for most folks, generally, the foundation that's laid, is laid in those two places. And interestingly, we got some statistics from the school system, and this is just rough averages, about, at Hickory High, about 50% of the kids are going to go off to a four-year school, the other 50% are going to stay here and start working or go to a community college, and there's a small percentage that may go into the military. So you've got about 50% of the kids that are coming out of Hickory High, as an example, that are generally going to stay in the community. So for those kids, you know, to be able to take care, take advantage of opportunities, so K64 goes into the school system and tells people, educates kids on what, here are the opportunities in your community, here are the, here are the tracks you need to get on for what you're interested in to be successful in those areas. So that's, that's what they do. They're about workforce development and going into the schools and, and talking about those, those tracks for various careers in our community. Oftentimes, kids will go to CVCC, you know, they have associates programs, get certificates, and that's a great leapboard into, into the work environment. And Western Piedmont Workforce Development Board, they are all about connecting individuals to those opportunities and working with them on a one-on-one basis to make sure that they're got everything in order to, in order to compete in the industry that they want to enter into. So that's, that's just very fundamentally how that works. Okay. K60, so let's dig into those three organizations and what they do. So K64 is an economic development initiative that works with learners of all ages, kindergarten to retirement, to ensure they have job-ready skills needed to meet current and future workload, workforce demands in Catawba County. So, again, they go into the schools, every public school, every high school, and they expose these kids to various opportunities that exist right here in Catawba County, and here's what you need to do to compete for employment in those industries in terms of the skills that you would need. They provide all the kids with state-of-the-art technology, they have Chromebooks that they hand out to every kid in the Catawba County Public Schools, and Hickory Public Schools, and Newton Schools all have Chromebooks that are assigned to them, and MIFI devices if they don't have internet at home in order to be able to get on the internet. So, they also teach soft skills, which is real important for this generation, there's so much, you know, with the computers, some of the soft skills are getting lost, so they focus on that, and they will connect individual students with local employers for job shadowing, internships, work-study programs, apprenticeships. Again, these are the kids that aren't going off to the four-year school out of town, so. And in short, K64 engages students of all ages in preparing them for a viable, sustainable career right here in Catawba County. So if, if this didn't exist, this would be one of the strategies that I would have listed, and it's relatively new, and then with COVID, it, you know, everything's been kind of sideways, but, but this is a very powerful tool in our community, and it's unique, very few communities have a program like this, and it's funded by Catawba County. So CVCC, so for kids that want to go off to community college here, here in town, so they got 5,000 students enrolled at CVCC, and the demographic breakdown is really interesting. It's not 100%, but it comes close to reflecting the community. So CVCC's done a really good job with their student enrollment of reflecting what the community looks like. You can see the average age in the youth of the students at CVCC, and there's a variety, they have dozens of career paths at CVCC, from, you know, associate's degrees to certificates to, it's, it's almost not unlimited, but it's very vast, and the workforce solutions complex that they have is like nothing else in the state of North Carolina. It is extremely unique, and they've got the virtual hospital that is, there's nothing like that probably on the Eastern Seaboard for community college, so they, they have done a really good job at CVCC with their facilities and the programs that they've developed for, for people here in our community. Western Piedmont Workforce Development Board, so their job is to connect people, job seekers, with job opportunities. So pre-COVID, this is, these are, the numbers are from their last full year of, of operation without COVID, so that particular year, they engaged, or they were engaged by 15,000, 15,000 job seekers, and those 15,000 job seekers received over 100,000 career services, so they may, each job seeker may have multiple contacts with them, they may have issues with, you know, they may have a criminal background record, they may have, not have a high school diploma, they need their GED, they may have transportation issues with kids or themselves, so they, their job is to help them overcome those barriers, and they work with people on a one-on-one basis. That year, they had 187 recruiting events, they worked with individual businesses, and they had over $600,000 worth of job training scholarships and paid internships that they offered to, and this is for the metro area, this is for the four-county region, to people in the four-county region. So the opportunity here in Hickory, so this is, Wendy Johnson is Director of the Workforce Development Board at the COG, so she said, "Every week I hear from employers that we need people, need employees." There are over 8,000 job openings in the, in the four-county region right now. So, if we were in a community that didn't have a robust economy and didn't have these job opportunities, then this chat, this would be a daunting task to try to improve these numbers, but there is opportunity here, so that is a good thing. So, we developed 10 initial strategies, most of which are going to revolve around employment and, and economic development opportunities, and how we connect individuals to those opportunities. And again, these are, I made a point of saying 10 initial strategies. We may come in and add some, we had some, we, we wanted it to be manageable, we wanted it to be something we felt like we controlled, but we can also be flexible and, you know, we can, we can adjust on the fly if, if needed. we can, we can adjust on the fly if need be, if something's not, not working. So number one, so job creation. So you may say, well, you're already doing job creation. That's right. If if we're not creating jobs in this community, we will never move these numbers, and the community will suffer as a whole. We have got to create new, good-paying jobs in this community. In fact, you have a closed session tonight, there's another opportunity for really good-paying, the average annual salary in Catawba County is 44,000. This, this potential opportunity is much higher than that, so that we want to continue to raise the bar in employment pay as well. So again, the best way to improve one's economic outlook is to secure, secure a good-paying job, so we're focused on that. We work with the EDC, in fact, Scott Millar's here tonight to present in closed session to you. And over the last 10 years, they've created 4,500 new, new jobs here in Catawba County, all paying above the average wage. Again, you want to keep moving the bar up on that. And the city will continue to place a, a major priority or focus on creating good-paying employment opportunities for our residents. So the challenge is, how do we connect individuals to those local job opportunities? So we're creating the jobs, let's make sure we're connecting local people to those opportunities. And one area where there is a barrier is, is getting, individuals getting the information about those employment opportunities. So it can be difficult to locate, if you don't know where to look, or navigating the the application process can be challenging. So we're going to establish a database for local jobs, and those databases already exist, but we'll be able to provide that information to individuals or groups who want to receive it. So we'll be able to push that out to individuals who want to know where are the opportunities in our community, how much do they pay, what companies are they with, and so forth, where are they, and so forth. So that's connecting individuals, but the individuals have to be prepared. I mean, it's, it's not a one-way street. You have to be prepared to take advantage of these opportunities as they arise. We want to support efforts to create a training facility that specializes in future and emerging career paths. So you think about the traditional industry in Hickory, well, that's changing, and we don't want to have another generation left behind because they don't have the skill sets for what's going to be needed for the future. And so the CVCC does an outstanding job with the, with the, and they do some of the mechatronics, the robotics, all that, but there, there are some gaps. And there are some organizations in the community that are seeking the development of a high-profile, regional vocational training facility to provide training and skill development opportunities, and ideally, that would be in Hickory. And just to give you some examples, ag tech, biotech, biopharma, energy systems, communication, as well as some existing traditional industries. So really filling the gap and providing training to to create those skill sets for these jobs of the future. So that's, that is a, and that would be a multimillion-dollar investment, and there's some conversations and movement under underway to to try to make that happen. So we're excited about what that might be. So the Chamber, they've rolled out an effort to educate local companies on the value of having a diverse workforce. They recently had a virtual summit, you know, some of the statistics from that, diverse companies had, have a two, over two times higher cash flow per employee, you know, 80% of employees, they value inclusive policies in the workplace. Ethnically diverse communities are 35% more likely to increase revenue. So there's all kinds of benefits, and we need to continue to educate our local companies on the value of diversifying their workforce, because that, that is an issue with, with some companies. So that, that will be an ongoing effort, we'll support the Chamber with there. Number five, this is important. So there are multiple organizations working in this world, this employment world, public organizations. So we don't do a lot of collaboration or coordination, I think that's a gap. So the main entities involved in that are K64, and the Career Center, CVCC, and the Catawba County EDC. And we're proposing, when I've talked to every group there, and they're all excited about forming a working group composed of senior management to help develop solutions to employment barriers such as transportation, childcare, and if someone has a criminal record, no high, high school diploma, you know, some of the things, the, the city is already involved in. We're, we've got a partnership with Greenway Transit, Soup Kitchen, some private industries to provide transportation to folks that don't have it to, to employment. So we're, I think, a third partner, financial partner in that. We've also got Casey McCall engages our homeless community in trying to get them employment opportunities and, and connected there. And finally, at the, at the Police Department, we have Charles Mackey, who's worked for years in helping individuals who may have criminal records overcome that to get employment opportunities. I know the, the Workforce Development Board does the same thing. So just trying to, how do we coordinate those types of services and maximize, and where are we duplicating, and where can we cobble resources together to reach more people? So those types of conversations amongst, amongst that group that isn't happening today. So we saw a lot of the report, there's a disparity in minority business ownership in Hickory. Hickory's known for its entrepreneurial tradition, and where Hickory is generally unrepresented with minorities in business, business ownership. The CVCC Small Business Center, Jeff Newell runs that out there, he does an outstanding job. They provide free business startup assistance. So we will partner with CVCC in promoting that, that center and provide space for them to conduct seminars or workshops on how to start and grow a business here in Hickory, so we can utilize our facilities in assisting with that and partnering with them to do Support the community's efforts to address the needs of the underserved. Just as an example, NAACP has established an Equity and Inclusion Task Force, and they've got five different areas that they're initially focusing on. So, you know, it's, those initiatives will serve at-risk and underserved students and families. And local churches have offered support to their volunteers in their facilities, and the city would do the same thing. We would offer, you know, our facilities for those types of activities as well, so we could partner. It's a great opportunity to partner with them. We would do the same thing with Central Latino or the Maung Association, or whoever, you know, would like to come forward and, and do some of that sort of work. We'd be glad to partner with them and, again, help address the needs of the underserved in our community. This was a, one of the meetings we had is actually at the Police Department with, there were members of the NAACP and local faith-based community. They had a great idea. So the idea was, let's, let's hold an event to keep kids busy during the summer. So Ms. Jackson just spoke to that. So instead of, you know, we, we have the back-to-school event that we have, and we'll continue to have that, but have a pre-summer event in the community to inform parents and school-age children of educational recreational activities available in the, in the summer. So this is focused on the school-age kids and their parents. We had, it was a couple of weeks ago, we had, I think, 35 vendors participated, and I think there were 350 people from the community. It was a great event, so that exposes people to here are all the services that are provided, here are the activities this summer that you can get your kids engaged in. So it's really a, it's spreading the word on what's out there for folks that need it. And so that, we continue, we will continue to do that, and that, that was an idea, and that seems simple, but that, that's real, those sorts of, even those small things are really important. Hopefully, we make a difference in somebody's life by, by doing that. So we will continue to do that every year. So that was a great idea that came out of the community. Number nine, so looking internally, so let's, let's hold me accountable. So promote workforce diversity within the city of Hickory. So we have, our workforce looks like the re, and so we want to look like the, the people in the community that we serve. And some departments are closer to that than others, but as a whole, we look more like the region than we do the, the city in terms of our demographics. So we're going to continue, but we also have, I mean, I'm no spring chicken, so we're going to have people that age out, and there's going to be opportunities for folks that come behind me and others that will arise, that will, so this will take place over time, but we're, we're pursuing, we've got a Employment Diversity Committee set up, find ways to reach communities and individuals that we, we aren't reaching in terms of trying to diversify our employment, our application pool. So we've got that going on, and we'll continue to work on that, and we'll, we've measured that on a regular basis. That's one of my goals that staff knows about. And then finally, so this isn't a one-and-done exercise. So we did, we'll continue to measure data and be transparent on the report and the progress. So we had the initial report, we'll do, we'll do, go through another iteration of this with the 2020 census data, which should be out this fall, and we can benchmark that against what occurred in 2010 to see what has, you know, improved or not improved. We don't know how COVID, I mean, there was a, COVID is going to be mangled up in some of those numbers because the census was going on during that, so we don't know the impact COVID's going to have. But we'll also, we'll come back in 2025 with the American Community Survey data and do another iteration like what we just did, and then again, with the 20, 20, 30 census data, do it again. So that will be four measures in 10 years of this data and how we're progressing. So, and again, we'll continue to make adjustments, find out what's working, what's not working, you know, take recommendations from the community, and we're trying to stay in our lane and not, we didn't want to reinvent the wheel and, or do something that somebody was already doing. So, but we do believe more collaboration will go a long way in working with these, improving these numbers. And we'll also, you know, a lot of this is about holding organizations accountable. So, you know, the school system as an example. So those, those numbers came out, and, you know, so they got their benchmark. So we'll need to, everybody, you know, as a parent, I need to hold the school, school system accountable for their performance, and everybody else does too. And I need to be held accountable for, for my performance with the city. So that's the way that works. If that's not happening, then, then we don't see progress with this. So that's just going through the 10 initial strategies again. And so again, the next steps here, we'll get the census data in the fall, and we'll come back and we'll do this again, and we'll, we'll see what the results are, and we'll benchmark those not only against some of what's in the American survey data, but also the 2010 census data to see how things have changed. So that's, that's the initial report, and you don't really need to adopt it, we're just going to move, I mean, we're just going to move forward with it and adjust as we need, and we'll continue to report back.
Will you engage Western Piedmont Council of Governments to do the same with the census?
It'll, there are other, there are other organizations out there that do it, and so we're, we're, they did a great job. We're looking some other organizations that may have access to some additional information, so we're, it could be them, or it may be another, another group, but it'll be the same sort of format.
Thank you.
You say there will be a website shortly for job opportunities?
Well, we'll, we'll have, we'll have website, we'll have data off websites available to push out to individuals that are interested in knowing, you know, where these jobs are, what they pay, and that sort of thing. So to make it more easily accessible and give people an idea of where to go find it.
Okay, and will that be through our?
Yeah.
Our city system?
Yeah, we'll do that from here.
Okay.
When do you plan on putting together the task force?
Well, that, that'll be a working group of the K64, CVCC, the Workforce Development Board, and the EDC, and that'll, that will happen probably almost immediately. And we'll start, you know, coordinating, you know, here are the programs we've got, here, you know, where's our overlap, where can we work together on some things and get more bandwidth on, on, or more success in some of these initiatives that we're all under, like, we do, as an example, I talked about, we do, we have a little program where we help people with felony convictions, gain employment. Well, the, the, the Workforce Development Board has the same thing. So how can we work together and not, you know, against one another on those sorts of things?
Do you have any idea how the makeup's going to be, you're talking about, I mean, that numbers?
In terms of on that little, that committee, it'll just, it'll be high-level management from each one of those organizations, because we want to be able to make decisions and not have to run it through and...
I, I think it would be helpful, because we can have people here that have worked with other groups, but even within that work group that the city is doing to have maybe an advisory committee made up of some community groups as well as, I would include the Board of Education. You know, really, that is such a key component in the early stages of funneling people into the, what we're talking about.
Yeah, and we can, we're going to start with this initial group, and then we can talk about growing it, but, you know, it's, it's workforce development. And, you know, I know it starts...
No, but I, I just, they don't have to be part of that group, but also make sure that we...
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Have a core group of outside groups that are working in the same way.
Sure.
To connect.
Yeah.
And advised.
I think there's an opportunity from an education standpoint, something I see in my job as a recruiter, is I see the expectation or the perception that if I go off and I get a college degree, a four-year degree, that that's a guaranteed pass into the workforce, and that's not the case. I mean, you know, that, that leads to underemployment, which is just as bad, and there, there's a perception that, oh, I have this education, I deserve a job at this level, and there's a disconnect there. And, you know, there's a difference between a four-year degree and job training. I think that's an opportunity to educate and inform people.
Absolutely, yeah. And we're, you know, four-year degrees aren't the, aren't, you know, fit for everybody.
No.
And that's, and that's okay. And there are different paths that people can take, and, and it's, like you said, it's educating people on what those paths look like, and, you know, what's the compensation in this field, you know, what's the work like, and exposing people and giving them...
The preparation to get to that point.
Right.
Exactly.
All right, I just want to say a couple, no question, just a couple of comments. First of all, I think that this was, was a very good next step. I think that, you know, we appreciate the fact that the NAACP brought this to our attention in the beginning, and, and as we said, we, we needed some time to analyze things, and we needed to put together a program, we needed to build relationships and partnerships and get some folks involved, and, and we've certainly moved in that direction. Of course, you've already mentioned the Western Piedmont Council of Government, you know, they were tremendous helping all of this, as well as was CVCC and the Chamber and other things. We're looking forward to, obviously, we've got a new superintendent now, Mr. Brian Taylor, was just, was just appointed, so obviously, we'll, we'll build a relationship and have meetings with him and, and see, you know, what kind of concerns and ideals that he has. So, you know, I think this is a really good next step, and, and these 10 things are certainly things that the city can address. And I think that you hit the nail on the head by saying, we need to stay in our lane. We need to partner, and we need to have the relationships, and we need to work together, but we need to, we need to do what we can do as a city, and, and we're certainly, as far as I'm concerned, we're on the right track as far as that's concerned. So I want to particularly thank our city manager, because I know you've put a lot of work into this. This wasn't, this wasn't something that, that you just, you know, tasked to do, and you thought, okay, I'll do it and be done with it. You put your heart and soul into it, and I know that you made a lot of the contacts and a lot of the relationships and a lot of the, you know, questions and stuff like that. So I think that you went far beyond what was expected perhaps in this particular case, and I want to thank you personally for that. And I know staff helped you with it, but we kind of put this on you to, to head us in the direction, and I think we're on, in the right direction and on the right path, so we appreciate that. Any other comments, questions, or concerns related to this? All right. Move on to the next item. We've had, we have several, it's that time of year where people rotate off of our boards and commissions. I'd just like to begin by saying, if there is a board or commission that you have a particular interest in, there's a lot of ways that you can find out information about that. Of course, you can contact us direct. That information is available also on our website and various other means. So if you're interested or think that you may be interested, or maybe you don't even know what they are, we can certainly point you in the right direction as far as that is concerned. So like I said, we've got several tonight, and I just want to make sure that we don't overlook any of them that we've already talked about and already planned to appoint tonight. I guess I can just start us off here. On the Hickory Regional Planning Commission, contingent on, these two are already serving on the, as our Catawba County representatives, and contingent on the, the vote from Catawba County, from the commissioners, I would like to appoint Jeff Curley to the one-year initial term as the Catawba County Representative, and also William Peckman as the three-year initial term to Catawba County. And also Mr. Robert Weaver to the two-year initial term for the Burke County Representative. It might be easier if we do these by commission, so does anyone else have any appointments for the Hickory Regional Planning Commission? And then we'll vote on all of them at the end.
Yep.
Okay. Well, let's, let's go through that, and then we'll just vote on all of them at the end, but let's, let's go kind of by commission, that way we won't miss anybody.
Why don't we do one, two?
Okay.
I nominate Bill McBrayer to serve as Board One Representative, initial three-year term.
Okay.
I nominate Philip Reed to fill the one-year, initial one-year term on the regional Hickory. Hickory... Hickory Regional Planning Commission.
Okay.
From Ward Two.
All right.
I'm nominating Junior Hedrick. It'd be a two-year initial term.
All right. David Williams? Are you still with us, David?
Yes.
Okay. Do you have an appointment for the Hickory Regional Planning Commission?
Uh, no, just not right now.
Okay. That's fine. You don't, you don't have to have it tonight. It's just, we're just going in order here, which is kind of unusual.
Yes, sir.
I don't have one yet.
Okay. Ms. Patton?
I want to appoint Ann Williams for the one-year initial term.
Okay. All right. All right. That's all for the Hickory Regional Planning Commission. Let's just go, I'll start back at the beginning. Do we have any appointments for the Business Development Committee? There's two there for the at-large. If no one else is going, I'll nominate Joan Long. She's eligible for reappointment and also Brandon Hedrick is eligible. I'll nominate both of those for reappointment to the Business Development Committee. All right. Next is the Citizens Advisory Committee. Does anyone have any that they would like to appoint for the Citizens Advisory Committee?
I'd like to nominate Greg Shabel for Ward Three. I mean, I don't think, I think it's a at-large, I'm sorry.
Yes.
He's in Ward Three. But anyway, I think he's taking Cliff Boone's place. Thank you for your service.
I don't know if that's possible.
Not possible.
Not possible.
All right. There's also, David Myers is, is, is willing to serve again. That's an at-large council appointment, so we'll make that appointment as well. The Community Parents Commission. Do we have any for that?
No.
Okay. Community Relations Council. Anyone have any appointments for the Community Relations Council? Did David have?
Mandy.
Mandy.
Mandy Pitts-Hildebrand.
Yes. That's a, I think that's an at-large, is that an at-large?
Caucasian.
Caucasian.
Okay. All right. Mandy, Mandy Pitts-Hildebrand is willing to serve again.
Yes.
And we'll appoint her.
Lakeisha Ross Johnson. She's eligible for reappointment and wished to serve again.
Okay. As, was, okay, I'll make that appointment to Lakeisha Ross Johnson. EDC, we have Stephen Schuford. That is a at-large. I'll make the appointment for Steve. Is that a, do we have a?
Ending this confirmation.
Okay, okay. We need to hold off on, we probably need to hold off on that one then. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Malar. Yeah, I'm trying to get these right because there's so many of them. Historic Preservation, Preservation Commission. Let's see. We have two, looks like that are eligible for reappointment. I'm not sure if anyone has spoke to them. Has anyone spoke to either one of those, Mary or Sam Hunt?
Sam Hunt's here.
Sam Hunt's, Sam Hunt's here. I'm, I'm going to put you on the spot, sir. You're eligible for reappointment and I'll be willing to make the appointment if you're willing to serve again.
Definitely.
Okay. I'll make that appointment. Mr. Sam Hunt? Mary, I don't, has anybody talked to Mary? Okay, we'll wait on that then. The Library Advisory Board.
I'd like to appoint Dr. Julie Boss from Ward Two.
Mr. Seeger, I believe you have one.
Yes, Beth Shabel for Library Advisory.
Ward Three. And Ms. Patton?
I don't have anybody yet.
Okay, I'm sorry. I was, I was just looking at it. I would like to reappoint Mark Thomas for the at-large position on the Library Advisory Board. All right. We're at the Public Art Commission.
Lori Childress.
Okay. And also Laura Costello. I'll appoint her. Then we still have one, if anybody's interested in the library or Public Arts Commission. Recreation and Sports Tourism Commission.
Susan Basoka.
Okay. And?
Steve Snyder.
Steve Snyder, okay. And?
I'm looking for someone.
Okay.
To take David Crosby's place, but I don't have anybody yet.
Okay. And for the at-large, I'll nominate Eric Brandon. All right, we're getting there. The Recycle Advisory Board.
I'd like to nominate Dr. Gray Winfield.
And then it looks like William Gerard is willing to serve again, so I'll nominate Bill Gerard for that. The University City Commission, nominate Ryan Edwards. He's serving and willing to serve again. Ryan's doing a great job, so I'll nominate Ryan. And then in the Western Piedmont Regional Transit Authority Policy Board, I would recommend Karen Dickerson and John Marshall, who are currently serving. Karen's serving as the primary and John's serving as the current alternate. And I would nominate Karen as the primary. And I believe that, I think we was going to replace John, well, not replace, that's probably not the correct term, but I think that we were going to ask Cameron McHargan as the alternate instead of John. Is that correct? Or we need to hold off on that one?
Well, let's go ahead with Karen and we'll, the two are battling over which one wants to.
Oh, they're, okay, they're, okay, well.
They're both here, we can have them find out right here.
Well, we probably don't want to do that. All right. Karen, Karen and then we'll, we'll figure out the alternate. We'll let those two, we'll figure out which one of those two wants to serve as the alternate. Okay? All right. Have I missed any that? Debbie, did I, did I miss any?
I second your nomination.
Okay. I'll make the motion that all of those that we've just discussed are appointed to the Board or Commission that we just talked about. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? I heard you, David. All right. That's unanimous. We, I, once again, I just want to thank those that have served in the past. I know we've got many in the audience who have served and we certainly do appreciate